Okay, we will call this meeting to order if the clerk will take roll call.
Is Councilmember San Antonio?
Present.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara is absent at the moment. Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Here.
And Mayor Bruce Sellers?
Here.
Record will show all members are present with the exception of Councilmember O'Hara, who just stepped out, and I will note in the record when he returns.
Okay, thank you. And for tonight, on this special meeting, we have one agenda item, which is to receive the report on the fiscal year 2526 City Council Work Plan First Quarter Objectives Update. And the contact person is our city manager, Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, we have our first quarter objective update. So just a little bit of a recap of how we got here. We conducted a two-day strategic planning workshop on February 24th and 25th of 2025, and it was to identify shared goals, community-driven priorities, and long-term strategies to serve the community effectively in fiscal year 2526. The workshop included mayor, members of council, it included staff, as well as the public. So during that meeting, we came up with a vision statement, a mission statement, and then city council identified six strategic focus areas associated with the goals. So within each of those six focus areas, we developed nine goals together. Within those goals, we then ended up, on March 24th, 2025, we considered draft objectives for goals one through five, and because it was so extensive, we needed one more meeting on April 9th to go through goals six through nine. So basically, all in all, we have six focus areas, we have nine goals, and we wound up with 76 objectives between city council and staff. One of the things we talked about was coming back to council to give updates. What staff did is, within that objectives, is we identified the focus area, the goal, the objective, and then we came up with goals for first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and fourth quarter. We also identified the lead department on each of the goals. Of course, some departments are cooperatively working with one another. The work plan does encompass July 1st, 2025, it'll be till June 30th, 2026. So tonight, what we would like to do is to update you on those 76 objectives. One of the things that we did was kind of color coordinate with the objective chart. So what we did was, green is a full go, and it means that we were very on task, and we either succeeded or exceeded the expectation for that goal. So out of that, 65 are green, 11 are yellow, which means we made progress on the goal. We may have not hit exactly our target, but we're on track, and none were red. What I wanted to do, first of all, was again, thank city council very much. It was such a collaborative workshop, it was great to have everyone together, and so many great minds and thoughts. Also thanking the community. We had many community members from whether it was our business community, arts, just residents, so it was really a very nice experience to have the community, to have buy-in. The other thing is, I really want to thank staff. Staff is the one who, as you know, council, you do your focus areas, your goals, you give us the objectives, and with your help and the community's help, staff is the one that carries it out, and it's a multitude of staff. Tonight, I have here our exec team, as well as many of their support staff, because without them, none of this would get done, and it's a lot of work. The other thing I do want to acknowledge is, with the 76 objectives, you know, this does not include CIP projects, and it doesn't include work-study projects, and it doesn't include the day-to-day. I think all of us know, we have many emails, and phone calls, and meetings, and one-on-ones, and staff evaluations, and then, unlike the fire chief, some of us do put out fires on a daily basis, small ones, that luckily don't spread, but we have that as well. So I really want to acknowledge the work of the entire city staff, and the fact that not only trying to accomplish 76 goals, but everything we do on a day-to-day basis. So I'm very proud of that, and I'm just very proud that we're all on the same team, the community, council, and staff, to come up to make these objectives happen and fruition, because they truly are for the betterment and quality of life of our community and safety as well. So really, what I just wanted to do tonight is, you know, we're very open to however we want to discuss this, really what I would just want to do is just point out, probably just the yellow, some of the yellow goals, really, and then we're happy to talk about all the green, but just to go over a little bit where we're at, and how we're making some progress. So if we could go to goal 1.3, and it's B, this was a little bit, we talked about some presentation of public-private partnerships for some of our fire stations. We will continue, or go ahead and complete that goal, once temporary fire station one, and city council direction on the permanent and temporary fire station six. So we will be pursuing that, we're just trying to kind of figure out maybe costs and how that might work. So that goal, we have made some progress, and we've done a great job. Temporary fire station one is almost ready to open, and it looks really good, and we've awarded the RFP for the temp station six for the design and a lot of the environmental, so we're really underway. Next up is 1.5, that deals with our homeless action plan. And we did get our new homeless program coordinator, exciting, Crystal Pugh joined us in September, we're very excited about that. And then also, too, staff, we are looking at some written progress reports, and also too, we have the San Diego Rescue Mission, we are ready to bring that RFP to city council in November, I think we're looking at November 12th. And this was direction from council, that what we did was, we ended up eliminating one of our homeless solutions coordinator positions, and what we did was, city council authorized us to go ahead and do an RFP for case management outreach, and also to add housing navigation, because that was important to council. So we did that RFP process, it was successful, and we will be bringing to council in November the award of those services. Okay, if we can go to 2.1, and if we can go to C. This one was to ensure GIS stormwater infrastructure data is up to date. Currently, staff is evaluating existing stormwater infrastructure for repairs in the current capital improvement program. So we don't have everything in GIS, because we're still identifying some of it, and of course, once we do identify that, we will definitely get that into the system that we can all track. Okay, next up is 2.3, and it's A, and this was to identify underground stormwater infrastructure in GIS, sounds a little like the last one. All city-owned storm drain pipelines are currently in the city GIS, and they have been identified. They've been classified by type, location throughout the city. Staff has issued an RFP for storm drain pipe inspection, and expects to return to city council with an award to the contract to conduct these pipe inspections in quarter two. So we're really moving along, and I think this goes to one of the goals we've really talked about, is figuring out what infrastructure we currently have in the city, making sure it's somewhere trackable, and that way, then we can talk about what money we need to upgrade, repair, or things like that. Next up in 2.3, we also have implement ARC GIS indoors to capture facility data. Phase one of the facilities assessment will include physical, digital scan, and RIVIT modeling creation, and as council knows, we went ahead and we did award that facilities assessment about a month ago, so the team has kicked off and it's fully underway. Phase two includes conversion to ARC GIS indoors with full integration into the city's GIS, and IT is procuring the required software licenses to do so. Okay, next up, 3.1, and this was a workshop with city council to discuss the draft document, and this deals with the circulation element. So we've had a little bit of adjustment on the circulation element. Planning staff met with engineering, traffic, and mobility during quarter one to assess the existing draft circulation element, and council's direction to determine what revisions would be required. In addition, Senate Bill 932 requires updates to the circulation element after January 1st of 2025 to include high injury network analysis and text to be aligned with the Federal Highway Administration's Safe Systems approach. This requirement of the new legislation was not included in the current draft of the circulation element. However, the required impact analysis of this bill is within the city's Comprehensive Safety Plan, also known as CSAP. Staff has been coordinating with the mobility manager on CSAP incorporation into the circulation element. So with that, luckily, we've got some documents that have both elements, but we do need to combine those, and as everyone knows, circulation element is part of the general plan. Next up is 3.2, and this deals with active transportation. After circulation element workshop, assess ATP, which is the Active Transportation Plan, and the CAP, our Climate Action Plan, for consistency with council direction. So internal staff meetings on the approach have occurred in quarter one. Staff determined that the circulation element must be updated first, after which the ATP can be amended for consistency, and the APD update process will include robust community input. And that was another goal of council, that we need to make sure that a lot of our plans all integrate, so that we don't have 10 or 12 plans out there saying different things, that way we can incorporate that, and also knowing that the general plan is very important to the city and a guiding document, and how do we tie that in with that? Okay, next up, oh, wait a minute, I think I'm on, this is a really big document, okay, here we go, I'm on the right one. We have a couple that don't have yellow, so let me keep moving. Okay. 4.3, native plant ordinance. So this was to present the draft ordinance to the Environmental Commission. The first community outreach meeting was March of 2025, second was June of 2025. Since July, staff has been finalizing the draft ordinance, preparing a list of educational materials, preparing potential incentive programs, and completing the SEQA exemption documentation. A joint UFAC and Environmental Commission meeting is scheduled in quarter two, which is November 4th, and as you know, it goes through our commissions and then would come to city council after that. Okay, next up, 5.2, this dealt with solar panels on municipal buildings. Staff is working with the CAP update consultant to complete the cost-benefit analysis, which was direction from council, of all proposed CAP measures, including installation of solar at municipal facilities. The benefit-cost analysis will include evaluation of the process and funding opportunities to implement solar projects at existing municipal facilities. Right below that, 5.3A, this was the cost-benefit analysis. A contract amendment was approved by council in the spring of 2025 that will enable the Energy Policy Initiative Center to conduct the cost-benefit analysis for all proposed CAP measures, and I do have a meeting with staff this week to talk about, or next week to talk about this, and when that will come back to council, which will be quarter two. If we can go to 7.4A, this was to create a grant process roadmap and assess AI use. Staff identified scenarios when AI may be used for grant writing. The objective will be supported with funding that was adopted in the 2025 budget for grant writing services, and that money does lie within the city manager's office. And that concludes our yellow. So I did just want to highlight those, because again, those are ones that we've made progress on, but didn't quite meet the target, but again, a lot of work went behind that. So tonight, council, I have the executive team, as well as supportive staff, that are here to answer any questions, receive any feedback. We do have Mr. Mike James, our new deputy city manager, on the keyboard, in case we're looking at making any changes or things like that. And for council up here, you have your first quarter updates, as well as underneath was just the entire work plan with all of the different quarters. So we're happy to take any comment, any questions, and review of our first quarter update. So thank you.
Okay, and I've got some opening remarks, but I would suggest we kind of go down, maybe not line by line, but section by section, and if there's course corrections. So opening remarks would be that, I remember our goal-setting session, the facilitator had one word that he kept coming back to, alignment, that we want to all be in alignment. We want staff, and I really appreciated the participation by staff in that, to get that alignment, and to get the alignment amongst the five people up here. And then I always look at the city manager and go, you have five bosses, the hardest part of her job has to be getting us in alignment. So that's why I was adamant that these be written down, so that we can come back to them on a regular basis, and we can review them, and if there's a course correction needed, we can discuss it, and we can get an alignment, realignment, if you will, and keep going, moving forward. So that's what I want to do tonight, we go through them and see if this captures what we think we intended together. We get, we may need comments from staff on some of the issues. Like I say, it's important that it's regularly reviewed, this is no different than MBO at a company, or even at a nonprofit. Then, so a couple of questions, when's the next quarterly review, and when's the next goal-setting session?
Thank you. So the quarters, the first quarter was July through September, and we're here in October, so that's great. So second quarter would be October, November, December, so we'll come back in January. I like to do it, you know, pretty much right the next month, number one, it keeps us all on task, so what we'll do is, we'll always do the quarterly update right that following month. And we will look to do our next strategic work plan again in February. The nice part about doing that in February is, it's before the budget, so if council notices, it was great, because some of the goals and priorities and focus areas that council had, we were able to incorporate them in next year's budget, and that gives enough time for community feedback and things like that, so we'll do it again in February.
Okay, and then I assume we meet again in April, do something similar to this, a special meeting, and then again in July, based on your algorithm?
Yes, we like to do this, we'll likely do a four o'clock special meeting, and that way, we have enough time to discuss and things like that with council, yes. And of course, we'll have a written copy of the objectives. Also, too, once this meeting happens, we will make sure that this is online, because the annual work plan is online, and we will continue to have the updates and things like that, so that the public is very well aware.
And of course, anytime that there is feedback from staff, we want to get that too, during this type of meeting, so I don't know, you can facilitate that. So with that, I would say, do you want to just start with goal, goal number one, and work down page one, and see if there are any course corrections or comments? I really appreciate getting this, so.
Yeah, sure, I'll start, mayor, with goal number one. I do have a question, but first I wanted to make a comment and get your reflection on it, Jennifer. And I feel that some of the items that you have in green have been started, but are not significantly well enough on their way to give them a green, and so some of my comments may be associated with that. I just want to call that out as my impression of the color coding. So on 1.1C, this is the Health and Public Safety Commission, and this is the Ansenius Fire Department, conduct community workshops and so forth, collect community concerns, and respond, ability to respond to major wildfires, and recommendations to city council. One of the items, there's several items listed in the update that have some potential, and I want to understand what our commitment is moving forward on those. Let me call out the citywide evacuation guide, and I see the comment after it, it says not started. Just using that as an example, could we get a little bit better update on our response to this 1.1C, and maybe specifically, if there's other things you want to contribute, Chief Gordon, feel free to, but specifically, my question is citywide evacuation update?
Yeah, I think if you recall, we came to the council with that gap analysis, and then brought to you some recommendations from the Public Health and Safety Commission, and from the fire department, on what to maybe fund for the next year's budget, right? And so when it comes to the evacuation plan, we're working through that with the Public Health and Safety Commission, that is on their work plan as well. We have CAL FIRE is going to come and give a presentation on the pros and cons of doing that, and then we're going to kind of work through that with the Public Health and Safety Commission. And then what was the other one, I'm sorry?
No, that was it. So perhaps the update might be, a gap analysis has been complete, and it's on the commission's work plan, and it's moving forward. And maybe that would be a correction I might recommend, if I'm hearing Chief Gordon correctly?
Yeah, I think when we looked at this, the recommendation or part of the goal was to just to do that workshop and bring back to you the information. The evacuation guide was actually not on the work, the goals itself, we just completed that workshop and gave you the information. So we can make that a yellow and put that into an evacuation plan, if you desire that. I'm not sure if we're going to get a full evacuation guide, once CAL FIRE brings that information back to the Public Health and Safety Commission, but it is on the flow path.
There really is an ongoing nature of it, so it seems to me as though we should have some expectations that it will continue to develop, and we will continue to hear more on this, and that we should expect that as far as the next steps forward. So I'd like to see that here. I appreciate your clarification, though, the action item was specific to the outreach, and this is what came out of the outreach. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. And then if I might jump on that, we have the, I think this is what's posted on the website, right, where it's got the quarterly plan, and so this is the first time we're doing this, so we're working through how that we want this process to work to keep us all in alignment. My goal would be to have the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter show different milestones, or it may show no milestones until you get the evacuation plan complete, or something like that. So what I, I view this, the quarterly progress timeline, as staff's response to how we address and complete the objective. And so if the response is, we're going to do a gap analysis in Q1, gap analysis, done. But a escape evacuation planning document may or may not happen by Q4, right? In which case, wouldn't be late today, we'd just be looking, and this is just a scorecard to kind of keep us at, you know, we're up there at the 30,000-foot level, saying, oh, is what's happening, happening, and do you have the money you need to do it? You know, are you on the right course? And the hardest part is, are you keeping us all in alignment, so that we are not giving you mixed signals? So that's where we're going. So there's this quarterly plan that, I'm looking for staff to help fill that in, because that's really down a level of detail below the big objective up here, so. And we're looking for your expertise on telling us what we need to do to achieve our objective. And so with that, any others on 1.1, 1.2 through first page, let's say? I had a couple of questions on 1.4, 1.4A, Prop 36. Do we need to have an objective sometime that talks about prosecution versus citing? Because I think the response right now is primarily, we should have had, what, 20 microphones
I'm sorry, if you could repeat?
Yeah, so on item 1.4A, which is enforced laws pertaining to changes due to Prop 36, the sheriff's office, the response is sheriff's office is enforcing all qualified charges associated with Prop 36, and we've seen that in the results, and we appreciate that. Now the question is, how do we take that from, to prosecution, where we actually get the really bad offenders, the repeat multi-offenders, to either take drug rehab, mandatory drug rehab, or go into jail, if that's their choice?
Right, so that would fall outside of our responsibility as the sheriff's office, that would then fall under the responsibility of the judicial system as far as the courts.
Yeah.
But as a matter of practice, we are, anytime we have an arrest that involves one of those qualifying charges, whether it be a theft or a substance narcotics case, it's a matter of practice now that we check for that Prop 36 charge.
And I guess my question is, do we need additional action in order to get the DA, or does the city prosecutor have to do something? Where's the next step after this to make this fully effective? And I'm looking for advice.
Yeah, I think that we would have to petition the court to see if we could actually get the case studies on when these individuals go into the programs, whether or not they are successful.
Okay, so that may be the next step right there. Moving on to C, which is the, and this is about the housing navigation, so 1.4C, and the housing navigation specialist, is that, that's different than the housing services manager?
Yes, the housing services manager is our employee, this is a person who specializes, so what San Diego Rescue Mission and our contractor would do is, it's that, you know, it's the outreach, which is helping and finding individuals who are unhoused and homeless. There's the case management, once they get them into services, to manage that case and to see their progression. And then housing navigation would be actually being able to find housing opportunities for them, so I've got Scott here if you need that, yes.
Okay, so I may, I'll put a finer point in my question, is the, we have two contract positions, we're going to have a contract come before us in November, is one of those a case manager, and the other one's maybe a combination case manager, housing navigation specialist, or is it three?
I see Patty making her way to the mic.
Yeah. It's two, and then we're hiring a full-time manager, housing manager, but yeah, there will be two that specialize, and they could specialize in all, but we'll have at least one that specializes in one portion of that. So the San Diego Rescue Mission has a setup team for that, for both of those disciplines.
If I may, so we will have two full-time case managers, and one dedicated housing navigator, so three total.
Okay, through the contract, assuming we approve it, okay.
And that'll be November 12th.
November 12th, okay, perfect. Anything else on page one? Anybody want to move on to page two? How about page two?
I don't really have a lot to add, honestly. I look at this and all the green on here, and I compared it to other cities, and I feel like staff is doing a really good job, and a lot of the questions I would have are questions we have in our briefings. So I appreciate the hard work that the staff has done on this, I don't have much else to say.
So anything on page two?
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
So this is not on goal two, though, sorry, I might be backing up a little bit. It is on page two, and it's goal 1.5. I just have a question, it has nothing to do with what we're reporting really as far as complete, but it's 1.5C, and it has to do with HAP update and goals and objectives. At the end of that, we say, as far as updating the HAP, we say a consultant may be required to complete this task. I wonder if staff could shed some light on whether that's something we should be aware of, is coming up for our consideration?
Budget.
Yeah.
So we're looking at several options of completing the HAP, and certainly-
So we're looking at several options of completing the HAP, and certainly Patty can fill in where my gaps come, but what we're really trying to do is bring on the manager, our housing manager, and look at it, and really assess it from a perspective of what it, what the demands are of it, and what the needs of the council were that were presented during the last hearing of it. And at this point, we're not sure how it's going to unfold, but at least we wanted to make that an option available to us if we need those extra resources to close out the effort.
All right, in other words, you're assessing it, and you'll let us know.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And that's, well, before I.
And you're filling a position that'll have input to it.
We absolutely are filling a position, yeah. We've, we've already opened that for position hiring, we've interviewed one, and it didn't turn out successful, but we'll get another good one, and it'll be, it'll be a great addition to the team.
Okay.
Patty, nothing?
Any other comments?
Patty's always got something good, so I was hoping I'd give her a chance.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on page two? Any questions, comments? On the, the My Encinitas app increasing the downloads, which is 2.2A, I assume we're doing this, but I'll just ask, are we promoting My Encinitas app on the, on social, our social media channel?
Hello, yes, Jessica Cantor is IT Director. I'm actually going to bring over Karen Parhar as well, who's really been critical in helping us with our My Encinitas adoption. So there are a multitude of activities we've completed this quarter that he can share.
Yeah, so for the first quarter, we've actually started a video campaign series for My Encinitas, so that's scheduled out throughout the fiscal year, and it'll be about every eight weeks, we're posting a video segment, and our goal right now is ahead by about 5%. So our goal is 108 downloads each month, and we're at 111, 164, and 116.
Awesome.
Cool.
I will make a comment on this, I really appreciate this effort, I know this is something I've been hitting hard, and to the city manager, I commend you guys on this effort. I think this is going to have huge value in the years to come, especially with all the changes in the city. So thank you very much for, one, doing it, but two, tracking all that, so I couldn't thank you enough.
And I have to add that I've been promoting it for a while, and now I'm getting feedback from people that it works. Wow. And, and I actually tell them, you know, I tell them, I don't want to do it for you, I want you to do it, and you tell me if it doesn't work. And then I get calls back that it worked. And, and so it, it is great. It's good for staff, it's good for the people, and it's a trackable process, which is wonderful.
I did get one comment.
Keep reacting to it and tracking it.
I did get one comment as of yesterday, that saying that every time they log in, they have to re-log in instead of it staying logged in. So they'll, they'll download it or whatever, and they'll, they'll log in, and then it says save information or save login data, and every time they go back in, they have to re-log in. So a couple of people use it quite often, and they're having issues staying logged in. So that's just not really, not really for everybody, but here we are, so I'll just say it now.
We can definitely look into that. We do test things on multiple device types, and we will try to recreate that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
And so all they need to do is submit a My Encinitas app saying, hey, I keep having to re-log in, here's my platform. So you got to log in once to send that in. Okay, and moving on to page three, which would be 2.3D, or 2.2D? And I'll hop in on that one, that's the instructional videos, so maybe that's, is that Karen too? I would love to see like calendar, like magazines do, an editorial calendar, if we could maybe next quarter, get an update to what topics are proposed, and gather input from, from council on where we see the most need for training instructional videos for, for the public, right?
I think the, the goal of this, of this specific topic was that when people come in or they call, if they haven't watched the videos, that 95% of their questions would be answered through those videos. So the departments that get more contact with residents should have, basically for everything that they're getting, if there's, if they're getting, you know, let's say 100 calls a year, and you could dissect all those down to what those calls are, or the information permit for, you know, planning department, or any of the different parks and rec, obviously all the your guys' permits, there should be basically an instructional style video for pretty much everything, and it should be in that two to three minute, five minute model.
And the way it's proposed here, every September, November, January, March, it says, but it didn't say what kind of topics would be for each of those months, and I think there would be an advantage, much like a magazine will used to publish what they call an editorial calendar of their planned main article, or thrusts of their, their additions. We should do something similar here where we're, we want to hit, I'll pick on Scott's department, planning department first, and then, and then, you know, traffic second, and, you know, reporting crimes to the sheriff, third, and, and just have something general that, that we, we can help focus getting the most important videos done first, because I suspect we're all talking to the public a lot.
So I'll make a correction and clarification when, when the discussion was had about this, and what council member Schaefer is referring to, is the ability of us to collect data on what the input from the app is, which we can collect all the different categories of data that come in, correct? And based on what we're getting the most demand on, we can direct as we go, so that it's current, and it's actually what they're asking in the moment, relative to that month's data or the previous month's data, so that we're giving them relative information that they are hungry for at the moment, rather than just scheduling it out and maybe wasting a month, and we could have covered something that was very specific to the, to the need of the time.
Okay, so, so you're putting even a better point on what I'm saying, in that take the data of the inquiries, and then develop the, the next video topic, and next video topic, and kind of prioritize it. Oh, cool.
And so it moves in, it moves in a living, current register, rather than just kind of playing out on a calendar ahead. That way, we're relative, we're relative, and the important part with social media, and, and the way people absorb media net, is you want to be in the current topic. If you're outside the current topic, you're going to be way off everybody's radar, and no one's going to watch it. So the more we can stay up to date through the app, through the information coming through on the app, the more we can make sure that those videos are relative to what is coming in right now, this month or the past month and a half, 90 days, something like that.
One of the things we're really, really grateful for as well is we have Alexandra Saint with us now, who is our PIO, and she's really teaming together with us to help guide direction of what we present, and it's a wonderful idea to use our My Encinitas metrics to drive some of that.
Has there been any indication of where the inquiries are coming in that, that you know off the top of your head?
Yes, it does change month by month. Sylvester's team does receive quite a few, and his team also is one that has the quickest turnaround. So public works.
But, but a lot of those are probably pavement, or sidewalk, or signs, or painting, or, I, I think what this is, we're trying to also, we're trying to focus and solve customer, citizen problems that are informational in nature, where an instructional video will, hey, keep, make it so they don't even have to call in, right? So that, that I think is where we have to take the data and sort it and figure out what, what, I mean.
I think the combo, I think the combo is what we're looking for. So there's a plan of what you're going to build out and develop out, with the idea that if there's an inquiry that's increased through the data, you might move that forward because the demand has gone higher. As you adjust the plan, every good, you know, no good plan survives first contact kind of thing. So, you know, as it, as you have that, again, I think the biggest, probably one of the biggest ones, again, I've heard is that the development services, like that part of our, our city is, has a lot of heartache, especially in the, in the everyday citizen, and I think that was by design initially for the last, you know, two decades, there was kind of a lot of design to create that, that pain for developers or people to develop. And now the big boys are coming in and, you know, getting to go right past CEQA, right past Coast Commission, where other people don't have that ability, and so a lot of our pain is in the development services side of the house. I know there's issues in the permit for the parks sometimes, but those are the two that I, that bring, you know, kind of the highest in my head, so there's probably two or three instructional videos. Even for, for people that have an architect or an engineer, if the architect or engineer hasn't worked in Encinitas before, they still have a ton of problems. So it could be to the point where you have the architect or engineer have the homeowner sign off that they've watched this video, or something of that nature, so that as it comes in, they know that they're expected to, to, whatever the level that, why it's so hard in Encinitas to develop, you know, something of that nature. So that's, those types of instructional videos would help anybody at the counter. Has anybody ever gone in, you know, you guys all work here, but have you ever gone into the counter in your city? And it's, the, the questions you're getting need a human answer, because if the people have watched the videos, or have the, everything's online nowadays, if people have the videos or on the online services, most people are going to go that route. Nobody wants to really come in here unless they have to. And so those videos, those, those communications should be specific to that, that person, we should be able to handle that more directly.
Okay, moving on to 2.3.
If I.
Oh, yeah.
Nope, sorry, 2, 3, I'm there.
Yep. My only question was 2.3A, the drain plan, remind me, I, did we budget and fund that? Or is that something that we ought to be looking forward to in the next budget?
Got engineering, step into the plate.
I think we didn't fund it yet, but hopefully when we get a mid-year budget update, we can fund that.
All right, Dan Nutter, Director of Engineering. So for 2.3A, we do have funding that was provided for this fiscal year for us to begin the condition assessment process for our storm and drain infrastructure. Right now, we do have an RFP on the streets, so we'll be interviewing consultants to come in and provide those inspection services. We don't anticipate the amount of funding is going to be enough to provide an inspection for every storm and drain system that we have. So we will be prioritizing the most important storm and drain infrastructure that we have to start the inspection services for those first. And we'll probably come back to council for budget adjustments for, for FY '27 to increase some of that condition assessment, so we can have a full report.
And then the master plan, I think must have been what I was thinking of, we have not yet funded, I think it was roughly half a million for a master plan, afford storm drains.
That's correct, there is no funding yet for a master plan for storm drains.
And when we did have, have that discussion, we talked about if we get money from the FEMA reimbursement, that might be one place we could put it, so, okay.
Exactly.
So that, thank you for correcting. And then while you're still there, on the next item, the pavement condition index plan, I know we were, this is one of the, every five years, we do an actual measurement of the pavement condition, and we're doing that this year. I was just wondering, when will that be available for review?
Great question. So right now, we are targeting November 12th to come as an informational item, assuming we do have time on the agenda for that date, we should be able to provide you what our report is.
Fair enough, thank you.
So that was the only area I wanted to look at, and I don't think it's a look at tonight, I think it is a long-term pick. 2.3, which in my opinion aligns with 3.1D and 3.2C, which are, are, are circulation element and our ATP. It's clear to me that the current plan we have of no fault if anybody's in the room is a failure. In fact, we admitted it sitting here when we were updating the PCI, that in 10 years we won't get, will actually be farther, will have dropped to less than 75 of our goal, right? So I, I think, I'm not asking we should do this tonight, or any suggestions, or any push on this, but I think one of our goals going to the next, the next strategic planning should be to redevelop that, to come back with a priority. And I think the reason it matters to have the ATP and the circulation element done is we need to figure out what streets we're really going to focus on and how to get this back there, what it's going to take. Because if we're going to fail in the next eight to 10 years, I believe is what engineer, the engineer said, we, it's, we've got to figure out what our goal is there, because we're not hitting our goal, and we've got to redevelop that whole entire program.
And I think you hit it, I think tonight is a status update.
Yeah, so.
And, but, but the purpose being, and so one of the things I've been doing on my copy of, of this, I, everything I forget, forgot to get in this year, and want to bring back, that I want to bring back for, in February, and the reason I brought up the February goal setting, is that, that what you're describing is probably something that we will keep bringing up at every quarterly, and, but ultimately look at how much added budget we're going to need for, for, I'll use pavement as an example.
I don't know that our budget's going to increase that much, though, from what I saw on that data that they showed us, so I think we need to rehash the whole entire plan. It's not throw more money at it. Every, we always throw more money at things, and throwing more money at stuff doesn't work in government anywhere. So.
Well, you didn't let me finish either. So the, I was, I was going to say that we are going to be talking, whether it's November 12th or soon thereafter, about PCI, and that would be an appropriate place to bring that up, when it's agendized as a discussion item for that night. And, and then the second thing would be, when, when do we want, when do we want to target, how soon for the, and we'll get to it, the circulation element update, and bring that back in front of, because that's ultimately the place where we're updating, what'd you say, 3.1?
1D.
D?
Yeah, that should have been back, back long before we were elected, in my opinion, but it wasn't, for reasons we won't go into tonight.
Yeah.
So the sooner the better.
So anything else on PCI, and we'll get to, we're coming up to 3.1, we can talk a little more about it there.
I have a comment on 2.3D, if we can.
Sure.
If no one else has anything on, anything else ahead of that. This is the facilities condition assessment, and maybe this is an opportunity for me to just get a little clarity on this, if you don't mind. You know, we're talking about PCI, and we're talking about how much money we might have in the future to improve the condition of our pavement. Here we are, for the first time ever, doing the phase one for a facilities assessment. And so I think the things we're going to learn from our facilities assessment are going to open our eyes as far as what our needs are as far as our facilities, which add on to our other needs, so it just kind of compounds. So I'm, my question, long way there, is physical digital scan, Revit model creation. I know we've got this contract awarded already. What are we expecting our consultant to give us as far as a Revit model? Because is, I, you know, I'm in, I'm in this industry, so I kind of understand what levels we can expect.
So there is a tool from Esri, which is our GIS system, called ArcGIS indoors. What that tool does is it uses technology to track assets spatially, like we do with GIS for a building, and that is what this will do. So we will know, for example, where an air conditioning unit is, where a specific switch or router is. It's, it's very helpful for identifying the location of where something is. And then you can also use it to calculate what? So what needs replacement? What is the condition? Because there is metadata behind each point in that building, which means that there is data about everything that is mapped through this model.
Thank you, that clarified it for me. It's not a traditional Revit, as I would understand Revit. Okay, it's more the ArcGIS. And is this also for parks, or is it just for buildings?
Park facilities are included, yes.
Thank you for that. So thank you for that opportunity for me to get updated and clarified on that. I really don't have any other comments there.
So to just hop on that thought, so the metadata tracking, is it for tracking maintenance of equipment such as air conditioning, or, you know, HVAC type system, so that you know that it nominally has a 10-year life, or it has a 20-year life, and it needs maintenance every five years, and you would be putting that kind of data in there?
Yes, it will help streamline the maintenance process, and we can even put our lighting in there as far as replacing lighting.
Okay, okay, cool.
I look forward to it.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on 2.3, 2.4? Shall we, goal three, quiet zone? We'll talk more about that tonight anyway, so.
Actually, I'm trying to catch up with you here, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I do have a question on 2.4A, which is as built in GIS. So one of our tasks here is that we completed requirements for GIS data. So one of our tasks here is that we completed requirements for GIS data, requirements, ASBILTS working with, ASBILTS working with Engineering Development Services, RISC and SDWD. So this is a requirement for ASBILTS from our, from our development. Could you maybe tell me what it is instead of me say?
Yes, so I'm joined by Megan Cervantes, who is our Multimedia and Spatial Intelligence Supervisor, and she will explain the current process and how this helps us to save time and make decisions with data more quickly.
The current process is we look at ASBILTS engineering plans and enter asset data into our GIS system. It's very time-consuming because we're essentially redrawing these plans into GIS or keying coordinates into GIS in order to create certain features. So the new process is to have a specification for either capital improvement projects or private development to provide the city with GIS files or CAD files so that we can bring it directly into the system instead of recreating.
So simply, what it means is today, we literally retrace plans to get them into GIS. And what we prefer is to have ASBILTS information that's already electronically provided to the city, provided to GIS in that digital format that works with our GIS system. And that makes it also more reliable because we aren't tracing, we are actually obtaining the exact data.
You get it, you get rid of human error.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
That's a really smart move. Good. Thank you for clarifying it.
That'll also be included in the contractual, yeah, language.
At least for the public sector, but also Development Services.
Dan Nutter, our Engineering Director, is also working on including some of this text in our engineering design manual as an appendix.
Thank you. Good move.
Quiet Zone, Eckraye Crossing in Santa Fe West. I feel like I either have enough update or will have enough update by the end of the evening. So keep going, we love it. Moving on to page four, I think it is? Any, I guess, here's the circulation element update. Do we have a target date for when we would be bringing that back for a council discussion?
You know, unfortunately, we don't have a target date at this point. We are sort of juggling what the state threw at us in regards to a wrench with the new law that had to implement into the program. We've, for the most part, got to the end of the budget with the consultant that was preparing it. We're looking at ways that staff can do some things in-house. We've been meeting with engineering and sort of trying to figure out where we can go with bringing a lot of the information that we do have, and then figuring out what information we don't have. But it, it really depends if the council wants to prioritize this effort, we would, and make this happen in less than a year, it would probably be something where we would need a consultant onboard. If the council was a little bit more lenient on the time schedule, we might be able to go longer with just staff and just bring the consultant team, Farren Pierce, back into the meetings to discuss the data analysis that we've driven, that have been written for the document, so.
I, for want of speak for myself, I prefer to do more in-house than less with, I think we spent 567,000 on this, previous council did. I thought that was a lot. I really like the current circulation element. I understand their law changes, but I would look for, in next quarter, getting, in January, getting a recommendation on, on what you think we should do and tell us, you're the professionals, and, but bringing it back. But I don't see an urgency to bring it back, other than to incorporate what Councilmember O'Hara was saying, that if we need to do something before budget time, we need to understand what kind of changes we're anticipating in this, the ATP, the MAP, and even potentially the Trails Master Plan. I do know when the previous council, and I was on the council, we adopted the ATP document. I thought there were holes in it, and the night I did a friendly amendment, and we agreed to bring it back within a year. And that was, of course, like a year and a half ago, or maybe even two years ago now. So I think the ATP is probably ripe for review, the, obviously, the circulation element is ripe for review, especially given we have a new council majority, a very different council majority. So I think it's, it's, there's a big apple to bite here, and I would look for recommendations that you have, and give us a proposal is where I would go, but I'd love to hear the rest of the council.
Yeah, I, I would like to see what we can do with it in the meantime, if we're going to wait, because there, between that and the ATP, there are items in both of those that have caught, and that lead, that development works around that have cost the city dearly at the time, and certainly cost my neighborhood a lot of pain going forward in the future that if the circulation element and the ATP were a little bit different and had certain writing into it, we could protect our citizens a little bit better. So if there's a way, I'm not really interested in waiting personally. I think we need to move on this, but at the same time, I, I'm okay to move on it if we can take a meander over it and see what we need to do in the meantime to protect the city a little bit better than it currently is, because right now, not working.
And so in particular, I think what you're looking for is subjective general plan goals and, and policies that could help protect the neighborhood from some of the state overreach, so to speak? And then, and then drive that, those goals and policies down into the plans, the ATPs, the.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and any plan.
And so if there's stuff we can identify before then, that other cities are doing, which I know that there are, that would be something I'd like to see us, see if we can do prior to getting that done. Obviously, none of us want to spend half a million dollars on consultants. At the same time, it costs us a lot more than half a million dollars to have Encinas Boulevard and Quail Gardens destroyed like it's been. So, you know, let's, let's, citizens first in that one.
If I may suggest, I think something that might be good is, obviously, we did have a consultant work on it before we've got a draft. I think something that might be, who has, and I just, I go back to like reach codes, I know we had like three meetings on it, but it ended up passing really well. I think maybe what we could do is, maybe we just do some check-ins with council. Here's one thing I don't want to do, is don't want to all of a sudden go down a path that we went down too far, did all this work, and we find out, hey, this isn't what you wanted. So I think what we can do is, if I can, I'll work with Development Services, and maybe what we can do is some check-ins, and maybe, you know, we can do, you know, maybe a little bit of an early meeting or add it, maybe it can be done at some of the lighter council agendas. But if that's okay with council, I would like more check-ins, just to make sure we're on the right path, and this is something that's good and deliverable, that you folks want and the community wants. I think I'd like to do that, if that's okay, and work with staff, before bringing some final document, and you go, hey, not what I wanted, but can you start all over again?
I would agree, but I totally agree that we need to get on this sooner rather than later. I think the circulation, I think we, we don't want to forget that next year FIFA World Cup is going to be in LA, and two years from that, it's going to be Olympics. We have a lot of circulation issues in this town already, and it needs to get dealt with, I think, yesterday. And so I'm, I'm not necessarily against a consultant if it gets the job done. You know, if it gets us to the point where we're going to go, I don't want to wait, I don't want to waste the money, but if it's something that's required, I think it's probably one of the biggest issues in our town currently.
And maybe perhaps bringing it back in November if we can, depending whether there's time, and maybe the second meeting in November, or whether it's in early December, and all that kind of dovetails nicely, because we could give an indication and talk about it in, in a notice meeting. And then we go into February with goal-setting session as far as, and start the budgeting, and if we need to budget a fairly large dollar item, to, consultant to, to update these documents, one or more of these documents, then, then we're all set up to go do that. So I, I like the idea of, I'm going to guess early December, but maybe late November.
I would definitely say this one, I've looked, we only have two meetings in November, two meetings in December. November's pretty packed, so I will work with Scott to see if we could do something in December.
Is, if possible, since we're going this direction, I would love to have some sort of community viewing and feedback. I think we have incredible resources in our community who could tell us exactly what we need to do on this, and I know we have to go the proper channels, but I'd love to have that information sitting up here to help staff not waste their time and go the right direction that the community wants them to go.
Scott, I think we would involve some workshops, wasn't that in some, I think with, within some of that? So yeah, I think that there would be some community workshops and feedback.
We're certainly looking at workshops with the program of it. One of the things that we might do is we might come back just quickly, or as quick as we can, with like the mayor mentioned and the city manager, potentially just policies and goals to look at. We have to do a comparison of the current policies that we've drafted, and then also the CSAT policies as well, and see how they fold in, how they overlap, and et cetera. So yeah, I think, I, I mean, it's, this is going to be a long commitment, for sure, but it can be a commitment that brings in outreach, it can, it can do, we can check-ins, like the city manager mentioned, and it certainly can progress.
But perhaps along the lines of what Councilmember O'Hara is suggesting, we could do the December meeting at 4 o'clock as a special meeting with, advertise it as a chance for the public to weigh in on, on policies and goals that they'd like to see strengthened, I'll use that term, in, in our circulation element or anywhere in our general plan. And then we could, as a council, deliberate and give mid-course correction, I think is the term that the city manager used.
Yeah, I think any, any, any public that has come into these meetings and sat at that, at the podium and on an appeal can tell you where their holes are in our circulation element and help us get to the core of the problem quicker than we'll ever get to it on our own.
And I'll just say, if there's timing is an issue, would there be some, a value of doing a, you know, some 2-2 ones prior to that, that public hearing, so make sure that we're all caught up on this? And this is, if, again, if timing is an issue in December or November or whatever, it might be worth.
Yeah, anytime. And even if we do bring something in December, as you know, number one, we have our normal briefings, but a lot of times when it's a special project, we do 2-2 ones. So council already knows what's coming.
So since we're talking about how important the circulation element is and how large our need is in the community, I do want to, and also, our director is saying, it takes a while to do all the public outreach, and it's going to take a while to get through it, and, and it does, and we want to be open to input and have the opportunity for that. So given all that, I do want to remind my, my colleagues that we have identified some housing element-related infrastructure needs in, in our city, and they were presented to us March 19th of this year. And there's six projects, I've talked with our city manager about bringing these back because I think that they weren't really well-covered at that meeting, as a meeting I wasn't at, but there, that's a mechanism for us to address those more immediate housing element-related infrastructure needs associated with some of the concerns that I think my colleagues are talking about. So we have a mechanism to move forward faster if there's need, and I just wanted to remind us, we have that mechanism, that tool at our disposal, to consider these projects again. And if these aren't.
Which mechanism are you speaking of?
Say that again.
Which mechanism are you speaking of?
We have identified there is, there are housing element-related infrastructure projects. It came before us on, on March 19th, and we can, we can address those projects right away, or we can modify those projects if they're not quite right. It's, it's a mechanism, it's a tool, we've already established, it's already on the record, it's already received council input. It was stated at the March 19th meeting that we'd bring it forward for discussion for funding this, this year, but it didn't make it in the mix. We could reengage in that dialogue to talk about housing element-specific infrastructure needs, because we've already brought it up, and we could just bring it back and say, okay, let's look, what do we need right now? Let's craft this in a way that meets the city's needs at this time. And, and it's something that's already come before city council. So I just wanted to bring it up. It's not part of our work plan, I understand, but I want to bring it up in response to the concern that there are some needs that may be more time-sensitive than the circulation element is really there to support.
And I think we're talking complementary or parallel paths. One is a policy, the circulation element is a policy goal slash plan slash municipal code change, and you're talking about capital projects that have already been talked about and submitted for funding and partial design, and they're, and they're kind of on that continuum. And a natural place to bring the projects back would be as we go into mid-year budget update, or we get other monies back from the federal government, and we update our, our budget in order to bring them forward. Because I think we did push them forward partially to get them to a design level that we can then submit for grants, so.
30% level on three of them, I think?
Yeah.
Oh, all six of them? Okay.
Yeah, just really quick, and I'm happy to send council a link to that report again. It was, it was to move six of the projects to 30% plan design. They're generally around some of the developments. So one of the things that I'd like to do is, that report was a little bit older, so what I've asked the engineering to do is, you know, take a look at those six, number one, probably look at cost estimates, as we know, everything goes up. The other thing too, that I want them to look at is with Development Services, to look at the timeline, which eat, with each of the housing developments, you know, because some are in different phases. For instance, one is over near Sage Canyon. We haven't even had Sage Canyon go to planning commission yet. So we'll look at timelines for when some of these developments, developments would go in.
Okay.
So we're discussing 10B from March 19th? Items 10B, March 19th. Six items we discussed and voted on already? Just, just to be clear? Or want to talk about changing those? Okay.
No, not changing.
No, no, it wouldn't be changing them. It would be if council so desires, they're only at 30% plan design, so if we bring it back to council, we'd need council direction to bring it to full design, and then if we were to construct. So we would definitely need some more council direction on all of these, absolutely.
And my takeaway from Deputy Mayor Lyons' comment was that there are other mechanisms to speed things up, and, and that's what you were pointing out, is that we could do some capital improvements to solve specific problems, and she was just using that by example and pointing out that, hey, maybe we need to push them one more time.
It takes us to come together and align behind what is most important, but we, we can do that. We can do that.
But, and, and again, this is complementary to the policy level, goal and policies that we talked about. So let's see, we're on page, I think it's four, at, down to 3.2, and it's La Casa Pedpath, Trail 82, Vulcan Pedpath, I think. Any questions on that? I had one question about Vulcan Pedpath. Did we fund that for design? I thought it was all we did. We didn't fund it for construction.
We only funded design.
And was that 100% design?
And I got Dan, I think, yeah, 100% design, but we did not. So once we, of course, do the design, then we would look for construction estimates and to have to bid that out.
Okay.
If that is what council desires.
I saw a nod, yes, so I take it that's 100% design. That, that's really my question.
Change perfectly. Yep.
Okay. And any, I looked at item 3 dot 2C and was trying to figure out how it's different or the same as A, and wondering if we could combine those two. One, one is on it, is green and one's yellow, but are they distinctly different? They both say update active transportation plan.
Yeah, I would look to the Development Services, we're always happy to have 75 objectives and put two into, you know, to combine, I'm, I'm good with that.
I would leave that to staff.
If Scott thinks that's good, and council thinks it's good.
If they think they're the same, then combine them in, in the future. Anything else on page four? Going to page five, and I'll, time note, we're about an hour, a little beyond an hour in, so we've got another hour left. I've got nothing. I think the only thing I had was all the way down at the bottom at 4 dot 1C, which is open space acquisition. And in a similar vein to what I had asked for earlier, is, is it possible to put any sort of quarterly milestones, maybe one or two each in the, in the quarterly plan, as far as what we want to get done, as far as a task plan or a list for the rest of the year for the open space acquisition?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that.
Okay. Anything on page five? Okay, moving on to page six, which is 4 dot 1 dot E at the top. Yeah, I really appreciate all this, so it's a good update in here. And the only update I had. And the only update I had on page six was down all the way at the bottom under Goal 5, talking about, what is it, 5.1A? And it was the, I think it was, it was there, yeah. The scoop, I wanted to make sure when we go for, we extended the existing scoop permits, but I wanted to make sure we were also looking at getting a scoop permit for Beacon Beach because to me it is time-critical that we get, have an opportunity, if we have an opportunity for sand, that we get it on beacons to help shore up that, that footing. And right now we don't have an active approved scoop permit there. So if we did suddenly get 50,000 cubic yards of dredged sand, we couldn't put it right on beacons. And I think the direction I would recommend is that we get a scoop permit. So we basically have, it would be about three scoop permits. We have the one in the middle of the, north of beacons, but we don't have one just south of Ponto, and we don't have one covering beacons to 200 yards south. And so I, I'd like to see us go forward because the scoop permit is opportunistic in nature, and, and we need to really have the permits in place ahead of time.
I've been whispered into my ear that the short answer is we are working on that. I have had an opportunity to visit some of our sand replenishment, replenishment programs, and it's, I'm catching up to that effort. It's pretty amazing. But if you need more information, Crystal is very available to provide that, but she said we are working on that effort.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thanks, Crystal.
Page six.
4.3.
4.3.
I know the tree ordinance is also, I kind of packed this and the tree ordinance together. And it seems like you almost can't have one without the other. And I, I, personally I think this should be done. It's the only thing on here I think should be done, but I don't think this is staff. Unfortunately, I think this is where it's been handed off. And now I am concerned about joint meeting mimicking just what the last meeting, joint meeting did on the tree ordinance. So I personally like to see this just go to environmental commission. They make their recommendation and it comes to council or whatever at that point. I, I don't, last, the tree ordinance, it's been passed back and forth to UFAK for almost a year now. And you're either a native plant or a native tree, or you're I know more simplifying, but this has got to, these things, again, our ordinances, that should be coming back. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that it's going to take longer in this road we've chosen.
Yeah, I, I understand, I know that the native, the tree isn't, the tree ordinance isn't on the plan, but we're also working on it. And we're also working on the native plant ordinance. We, there was a little bit of a slowdown with the committees and what they thought they could do with regards to the code update. We've narrowed their focus down extensively. We've brought it down to about four or five bullet points, and we're bringing that back ASAP to both of them. And we, we plan on using our lessons learned for how this maybe just got slightly derailed, but we're putting it back on the tracks and it's moving forward. I can promise you that. We've all met on several occasions for both. And we, we definitely have a lessons learned time where we don't want to see this happen again when we do take these to committee for many reasons, but also we want to give the committee a good opportunity to provide their insight. I think we have done that and will continue to do that, but I, next month we should have something to come, come in.
You've had a year. The committee's had a year.
No, it's, it's been a while, and now we're starting to recover.
It's been a year.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, basically been a year. Last, it was like my first or second meeting, and I got flack over it. And it's been, it's been there for a year.
You're talking about tree ordinance.
Tree ordinance, right. And I've, I've dove into the, the leadership of that. I think the city's wasting money on the current way it's leader organized. I've looked at the contract we have for that committee. It needs to be reorganized and reset, and I've given, I've already shared this information with both Mrs. Swarm and our city manager. I just, we're muddling around, wasting time and wasting resources on something that doesn't take a year to do.
Yeah. So if I can hop in, I, I don't view this as the tree ordinance, which is I think what we're talking about right now. And the item that we're talking about is the native plant. They're very different animals, very, very different. I've been very involved with Deputy Mayor Lyons on this one. I've gone to most of the public meetings for the native plant ordinance. I have not done that for the tree ordinance. The tree ordinance is a very difficult thing to craft without having lots of unintended consequences. And the construct of the native plant ordinance, the way it's been going, is a much more, well, it doesn't really affect private, privately owned, single-family homes, right? So we're, we're not even going there at all purposely to avoid those unintended consequences. So I don't consider them the same. And this one's going through, and I don't have a problem with it going to UFAK and Environmental together. They're, they're going to come back with their comments. I, I don't anticipate that slowing anything down there. I, in fact, plan to attend this meeting. So like I've done most of the others, and I think, and Deputy Mayor Lyons has been most of them too, whenever we have the time. So as far as what we're talking about here, I just wrote down on my notes that we should talk about as we move forward, the tree, the, the mature tree ordinance and, you know, we'll see if it's possible to craft. I'm, I'm not convinced it's possible to craft a, a good mature tree ordinance. I would like to come up with a way.
Sure.
But there's so many unintended consequences, and I don't see that with the way we've crafted the native plant ordinance.
I agree. I just think with, with both, at some point you got to poop or get off the pot.
And this one's moving forward, so.
And I do want to just make sure, one of the council-initiated items that had come up was, and from some of the meetings, was to kind of evaluate UFAK. So I wanted to let you know Public Works will be bringing that report back in November. That looks at the, the UFAK and has some recommendations and what they do and things like that. So I do want to let you know that we'll be coming back to council next month.
Okay. Anything else on that page? I've lost track of page numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on to, the 5.1 is at the top of the page. 5.1, yeah. Lagoon dredging. I appreciate all the updates on this page. I really do.
I have no comments.
Yeah, I have no comments. I, I thought this was, this is doing exactly what I wanted it to do, is get the update and see where things are going and reaffirm that we are still interested in doing all these things. So anybody else on, on that page? Moving on to the next page. 7.2 at the top, yep. What pray tells an EPL? That's all. I, I didn't know what the three-letter acronym, TLA, was. Under 7.2, it says researching the EPL system. Oh, that explains it. It's something in IT.
The EPL system is essentially our online permitting system, so that's where all of our permits live.
Okay.
If you, if you go back to the previous page, you'll see the business commission is coming together, and I think that'll be helpful in that process also.
Yep. Yeah, I think there, those two are joined significantly. And I talked about the, you, you mentioned something about pulling permits, whatever. I don't know if I've talked publicly about this, but I, I pulled my own gas permit, and I've talked to staff about this. And, and it, in the high-tech industry, consumer product industry especially, we talk about eating our own dog food, and so I got to eat our own dog food. And, and it took an extra week, and it took some added, added, but it, but I, I have confidence that our new staff will map out that process along with these objectives and will, will, will get improved permitting, process flow, instructional videos, the whole bit. I think it's a multi-faceted answer, so.
Yeah, I certainly think, as, as you indicate, Mayor, it's comprehensive. It needs to be done comprehensively. I'm going to look to some of my past experiences where we've improved the permitting systems, whether it be various degrees of over-the-counter type permits where, you know, certain, certain applications don't even really require a permit to be processed except for at home and then an inspection to be provided subsequent, something like an insta-permit, so to speak, where, you know, things like a, a water heater, something similar to that. The building official has also informed me that there are a lot, a couple tenant improvement changes to the building code, which might also facilitate that for businesses. So along the same legs, we're going to be looking into that. We're lucky enough to have an IT department that is very well-versed in our, our intergov system and can update our system very conveniently and easily. So we don't have to go out to Tyler Tech anymore and just go through all that arduous changes. Jessica's team is amazing when it comes to that. And also, our planning manager, Andrew, is very capable when it comes to knowing what deficiencies there are. He's, he's listening to the public in that regard. We're hearing them. When they do come, we're quick to jump on changes or issues and responses to that. But also, like you said, we want to get ahead of it with the system and make sure it's functioning well.
A comprehensive review, ultimately with input from business commission too, if we get to that point, when we get to that point. So, cool. I've got something on 7.4A. Anybody before that?
Nope.
Okay, on, on, this is the explorer, the grant writing support opportunities. One of the goals I thought we discussed was identifying, changing how we write grants here in general, and I'll probably direct this to the city manager. Where this came from in, in my mind was, I call it the Davis model. They, they have a lead grant writer, and then this person has a stable of contract grant writers that they may use, they may not use. And, you know, I think I brought the example to the previous council of, they, they won a $20 million Cool Asphalt Award. I, it just, Dan, imagine how much asphalt you could, you know, how cool it could be to, to really improve our PCI with that kind of thing. But I got on the phone, I, one of our citizens got on the phone and, and talked to her, and he said, you need to call her. And I called her, and they just had a different way of going about capturing grants. And I thought the coordinator idea, so I, I want to make sure that this, that's what was, at least in my mind, what I meant here. And I don't know if the rest of the council has comments, but I, I want to look at improving our ability to get more grants, have a higher likelihood of capturing the grants. And, and so I think there's a central, central person in that within staff.
I couldn't agree more. I think this is a huge opportunity, and especially with the infrastructure requirements. Again, I have said it, and I'll say it again, that Station 1 is probably a microcosm of more, and Deputy Mayor Lyons alluded to this earlier as we started getting into the facilities and more stuff. We're going to start seeing more stuff come, and so grants at this point are a necessity.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments there? No? Okay. You hit, you hit your mic. I was taking that as a signal you wanted to speak.
No, I was ready to move to 8A.
Okay, 8A.
So 8A, I think-
Next page. 81.A.
8, 8, yeah, sorry, 81.A. I think 81.A should be permanently yellow. I, I do. I'm, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not kidding, if you say anything, I think it should be permanently yellow. I think we've had enough discussion about how this is not delved out at all. And I think when we talked about updating the general plan, municipal code include objective standards, we can say with certainty that we have not completed that task and we have not even touched the tip of the iceberg. And once we dive in, it's going to be, it's going to be like the rabbit's tunnel that just opens up and no whole different world. There's a lot we can dive into that we need to dive into on the objective standards around fire safety and development and housing to protect our residents in the city that has been taken hard advantage of by many, many people in this room and outside of this room. And that needs to stop. And it's our duty up here to make sure that we dive into that and really push 8A, which, which may be, in the long term of this city, as far as public safety, because that may be the most important goal that we created.
Yep.
And it may be more urgent than the circulation element update, too.
Of course.
Both at the same time, in my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Again, if it were to happen, it was, it was, you know, it'd only be too late.
Okay. Moving on to the, oh, last page, yeah. Last page, 8.1B on top. Anything, I've got one on 8.2, but if anybody's got anything on 8.1, we can do that. Lacking that. This, I wanted to note on 8.2A, this is about increasing the inclusionary requirement. And I don't think that's worded quite the way it was intended. This should only, we're talking about increasing the inclusionary requirement on what's called affordable housing overlay zones. So it's only when the city is taking a landowner that has a piece of land and granting them a value increase that we should be taking part of that value increase back. And many years ago, when I was on planning commission, we, we did unanimously recommend that, but then when it got to council, it got put back to no increase in the inclusionary. So it's not to increase beyond where we are today on the standard inclusionary requirement of 15 or 20%, depending whether it's low or very low. It would be just on the affordable housing overlay upzones, the, the, where, where the city in a future housing element, for example, where we have to upzone additional land. And I think that's a very critical distinction that could be, get confused quickly and-
So we could update that too, if that's correct, because I, I think it probably is, but to only include our housing sites. And what we, again, when it, when you're talking about processing inclusionary updates, it's a very technical process. You have to look into the feasibility analysis to make sure that it's fair and-
And precisely, so that it's not a taking. That's why when you're granting a huge value increase on a piece of land as an affordable housing overlay zone, you're giving, it's really just a 100% gift if you don't get something back in, in return. And so we ought to get a part of that value. And that was the proposal out of the planning commission back several years ago, but it got reversed by the council at the time.
Yes, staff can look into that, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to Goal 9. Any, any updates to these goals? I think one of the, I'll talk for, I would, since I was the voting member at Cal Cities on Item 9.1A, my goal is for next year to have a, get enough local cities to join us and potentially have a, a resolution put in front of the Cal Cities body that would support something, if not our neighborhood voices, something like our local control, which is in fact what Cal Cities was founded to do 100 years ago. So trying to bring them back to their roots.
I think, I think Cal Cities is not going to be a true ally to us until they become transparent with their voting process. When they vote in their committees, the vote is not public. And so it allows people to say one thing in public, they support local control, and then vote however their party tells them. And, and so if, if we're going to push Cal Cities, I think before we're going to get anything out of them, it's going to be transparency first. And then, then we can hold them accountable to what they're doing. Right now, there's zero accountability at Cal Cities. I'd really like to see that come forward so we can actually get some, something other than a word salad from them about how they support local control and the various aspects of needs for the cities.
They're in the process right now of collecting priorities for next year in a survey. So if you get a chance, go on the website and, and submit and transparency. I will do that. I will, I will do it for us, but I, I don't know that it's limited to just me. So-
Sure.
The opportunity is there. I think we can do both.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that. Anything else on 92 or 93?
If, if we could, to the city manager's office, if we- If we could, to the city manager's office, if we could get Jonathan just reaching out on a, whether he has a newsletter or something consistently with us on a regular basis, rather than just when something pops up, that would be really appreciated and really helpful, among the other million things we have going on.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hera. Our new deputy city manager, Mike James, is head of Legislative Affairs. We can absolutely add that, that's perfect. We also plan on bringing Jonathan back a few more times. I also know that the Council Subcommittee on Legislative Priorities is working on that, so we'll be bringing Matt back to council, but absolutely, that's something we can do.
And I would add that I'm on at least one newsletter from a legal firm, one that we're considering, that is very good, that it has some pretty good updates on, kind of along the same line. So, and I'd be happy to share that offline. So with that, does staff have any questions? Don't be shy. Is there anything confusing in the objectives? Because, again, the goal here is alignment of us with you, with city manager, and, you know, we, this is a great public forum to get us all in alignment. You guys are so quiet. And I love how you're all sitting in the back of the room. Next year, or next quarter, I want to try and get more people to sit up front where we can actually see you.
Yeah.
I would just like to have a closing comment to thank our city manager and the leadership of the city, as well as staff, for your good work and this good update. We had some questions, but, and actually got off track a little bit, but the update itself, I think, is really encouraging. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that. I think I said before, if you looked at other cities, you wouldn't, and they use the same format, you probably wouldn't have as many green boxes as we have. So appreciate everybody's hard work and obviously ability to pivot and work hard.
It's easy to echo exactly what was just said, but you guys haven't just done it with, you know, with the consistency and the constant of the years past. There's been a lot of changes this year to include the personnel, obviously all of us up here, so to do that in the adversity that's been presented, obviously different personalities, so it's very commendable on the people that you are and your commitment to the city and what you do. Appreciate it.
And in a pretty short amount of time, too. I think, I want to talk to the city manager. Jennifer, she was really excited, and she was excited to tell me how many were green. So, great job, everybody.
So again, thank you, council, so much for your feedback tonight. We will be back in front of you in January after second quarter, and we will get these updates up on our website under the annual work plan, so the community gets to see this as well. And again, thank you, staff, for being here. You answered questions beautifully, I appreciate that. I can remember only so much, I try. So thank you again, we appreciate it.
And then one last comment. We've, on all the staff reports, I really appreciate that we've added or re-added the section where it's the general plan alignment and the annual work plan alignment. And the whole idea is, so all of us, as we read the document, as we, as it's written, you're thinking, how does this meet with these goals, these annual work plan goals we're trying to get done? And so, again, alignment. I'm going to have T-shirts made with alignment on it or something, I don't know. So, well, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.